... followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we come to fore you this evening and pass your blessings upon us. I pray that you continue to guide us through this meeting, continue to guide us in the direction and decisions we make for this meeting, and help us every day, even if it's a few. Give us some strength into our game challenges that may come our way, and help us go in the right direction.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the Tuesday, January 22, 2019 City Council Meeting. This time, I'll call the meeting to order. Mrs. Donaldson, roll call, please.
Fitzwater.
Present.
Graham.
Here.
Hensley.
Here.
Hussey.
Here.
Kimna.
Here.
Mahalovich.
Present.
Prather.
Schreiber.
Present.
Ward.
Here.
Wiseman.
Present.
Item three, I'll entertain a motion for adoption of the agenda. So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And before we begin, I'd like to recognize, we have some scouts with us this evening, and we're happy to have you here. And if you would like, you can come up to our podium, and if you'd like to introduce yourself and tell us maybe what school you're from, and maybe what badge you're working on. So you're all welcome to come up together, and we appreciate you all having -- coming tonight, get to see city government in action firsthand. Welcome, everyone. Sure, sure.
We are with you.
Can introduce yourself and tell us what school you're from.
Okay, I'm Zachary Azar, and this is Troop Ten. We're from Thomas Jefferson and Lewiston Clark.
Wonderful.
We're out of Grace Episcopal Church.
Okay, great. Well, we're glad to have you. And if you'd all like to say your name in the podium, you can all introduce yourselves as well.
My name's Terry Klein, and we go to Thomas Jefferson and Lewiston Clark.
Welcome.
I'm Parks Norteski, and I go to Thomas Jefferson.
Welcome.
I'm Dominic Azar, and I go to Thomas Jefferson.
I'm Jamie Leahy, and I go to Lewiston Clark.
Colin Boss, and I go to TJ.
I'm Warren Steer, and I go to Thomas Jefferson.
Wonderful. Well, we're glad to have you here. Are you working on a certain badge this evening?
We're working on community and communications.
Great. Well, we're glad to have you here. Welcome. Thank you for being here tonight. Item four, miscellaneous agenda items. We'll be recognizing our January Outstanding Employee Service Award recipient, Pat Duncan of the Jefferson City Police Department.
And I will ask Officer Duncan to come forward, and Lieutenant Williams, who is sitting in for Chief Schrader. So congratulations to Patrick Duncan, City of Jefferson Police Officer, for receiving the City of Jefferson Outstanding Employee Service Award for January 2019. The recognition is not only for the specific examples referenced in the nomination form, but also in recognition of the service Officer Duncan provides to the citizens of the Jefferson City of Jefferson on an ongoing basis. Some of the information, and I'll paraphrase from the nomination form, includes the following. Officer Duncan has devoted almost eighteen years of dedicated public service to the citizens of Jefferson. Officer Duncan is currently assigned to the most visible component of the police department, which is the patrol section of the Operations Division. Officer Duncan serves as a field training officer responsible for the in-service training of certain police recruits during their introductory period with the police department. This is an extremely demanding position and is critical to the development and eventual success of the police training. Officer Duncan has enthusiastically accepted his role as a field training officer and actively participates with the knowledge of how important the role is in determining the future of the police department. Officer Duncan brings extensive experience to his position and is considered trustworthy in everything he does. Officer Duncan is often called upon by his supervisor to address unique challenges and special projects that require the attention of a police officer with his comprehensive skill set. Officer Duncan is available to effectively focus on the issues with which he is faced and ensure that a fair and constructive resolution is achieved. During these problem-solving matters, Officer Duncan is careful to mentor younger and less experienced officers with the overall objective of developing a professional member of his peer group. Officer Duncan addresses each call for service with exemplary efficiency, effectiveness, and the application of established ethical standards. Officer Duncan combines his public safety experience and a consistent positive attitude to ensure positive results in all aspects of his job. Officer Duncan's unique commitment to duty and his unending desire to equitably and cordially interact with those he serves represents an invaluable asset to his patrol team, the police department, and the citizens of the City of Jefferson. Officer Duncan recently assisted municipal court, providing excellent customer service and assistance, including working with and assisting citizens of municipal court, staff, the prosecutor, and the judge. Officer Duncan is always professional in his interaction with others. Officer Duncan provides excellent customer service on a consistent basis. Officer Duncan often goes above and beyond. Officers Duncan, Duncan's significant contributions to the overall quality of life of the city are recognized and appreciated. Congratulations and thanks to Patrick Duncan, City of Jefferson Police Officer, for receiving the City of Jefferson Outstanding Employee Service Award for January 2019. Congratulations. Do you have some family member and some other workers here maybe you want to introduce?
Just my wife Stacy, works for municipal court, and then the whole back row.
Justin.
So, you're welcome.
After all that greeting, you're going to get Justin.
Congratulations and thank you for everything that you do for the city. Appreciate it.
On behalf of the City Council, it's our honor to have you here, and we sincerely thank you for all you do for our city. You work so much extra hard to make our community safe and go above and beyond, as was stated, and we're just very proud of you and very happy to have you here in the City of Jefferson, doing what you are every day for our citizens. So it's an honor to honor you. And we do have something special we'd like to present to you, a city coin today. And if you'd like your family to come over as well, and we'll take a picture, and the council will come up, we'll get a picture, so.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
While you walk around, I do want to say that congratulations to Officer Duncan, and I just want to say that each and every time that I've encountered Officer Duncan has always been with a smile. So certainly that says a lot. So keep that smile up, sir. And thank you.
Make sure you get the box back.
All right, congratulations again, Officer Duncan. Thank you. Item five, public hearings. We have Bill 2018-93.
In ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, changing, amending, and modifying the zoning map of the zoning code of the City of Jefferson by rezoning 8.43 acres of land addressed as 1101 East Capitol Avenue from M1 Light Industrial to PUD Planned Unit Development and approving a preliminary PUD plan for said property.
Mr. Sonny Sanders, please.
Mr. Barron will be conducting this bill summary.
Thank you, Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, the location of this property is highlighted up on the screen. It is the location of the old International Shoe Factory Building, located on the north side of Capitol Avenue, three blocks east of Lafayette Street. It's a touching house. The property is currently zoned in M1, which is a Light Industrial zoning designation. This bill would rezone the property to a PUD, a Planned Unit Development zoning category, and also approve a PUD plan, a preliminary PUD development plan for the property. Property, as I mentioned, currently consists of the existing International Shoe Factory Building, which is a five-story building with a one-story structure located at the rear of the building. The yard out in front of the building is generally flat, going up to Capitol Avenue, and then the rear of the property is a fairly hilly forested area. And so up on the screen is a picture of the existing building. The PUD development plan for the property would include a spread of different land uses that would take place within the building, kind of separated by floors, so each floor having a slightly different use, as outlined within the PUD plan. And so up on the screen are the architectural renderings for each of the floors. I know they're very difficult to see on the screen. We do have boards out in the hallway that have each of those floor plans on them. And so the first floor of the building would consist of a restaurant bar and a spread of indoor entertainment uses, including mini bowling, axe-throwing, seasonal haunted house, and mini golf, with the second floor consisting of more indoor entertainment uses, including escape rooms. And third floor, generally office space, and also some event center space, for example, for receptions or other events. And then the fourth and fifth floors would be converted to apartment units. As far as site improvements, go up on the screen is the PUD site plan. Site improvements would include construction of a parking lot located out in front of the building in the flat area between the building and Capitol Avenue, also construction of stormwater detention infrastructure, but also a spread of outdoor uses are proposed within the plan, including an outdoor haunted house trail, so to speak, zip lines, and outdoor mini golf area. So the PUD plan does have a phasing plan, so the development would move forward in three phases, with the first phase consisting of the first, fourth, and fifth floors of the existing building. That's the restaurant and indoor entertainment uses on the first floor, and then the two floors for apartments, the fourth and fifth floor. And then Phase Two, consisting of the middle space in the building, the second and third floors, which was, again, more entertainment uses, and then also the office and event center space. And then Phase Three being completion of the outdoor recreational areas. And so I wanted to touch on one item, and that is how this proposal relates to the city's adopted comprehensive plan. And so up on the screen is a screenshot out of the adopted Central East Side Neighborhood Plan, which is the long-range plan for that, for this neighborhood. I have in a green circle the property highlighted, and so it's within that planning document, this property actually is specifically called out as being ideal for a mixed-use type of development. And so the purpose of this is basically to say that this proposal does fall in line with the city's adopted plans for the area. This item was recommended for approval at the December 13 meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have prior to opening the public hearing.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Barron? Okay, at this time, we will open the public hearing for Bill 2018-93. Is there anyone that would like to speak on that bill? And you're welcome to come to the podium and... Welcome. If you could just state your name for the record. Thank you.
My name's Tywin Lewis. This is a great addition to our community. However, adding alcohol into an environment, as far as our community already is struggling with alcoholism, the meth epidemic, and everything, I don't think this should be an environment where children and alcohol, our families are recovering in our community. That's about all I have to say. Apartments, I know it's phased out for years, but to mix all this into one really needs to be considered before this goes into action. That's really about it.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Is there anyone else here this evening that would like to speak on the bill?
Hi, good afternoon.
Welcome.
I'm Raymond Lataki. I'm one of the owners that are projecting this project. I thank everybody for coming out and considering the review for this property rezoning. As you can see, it's a large project. It's a multi-phase. Our whole idea is to introduce some large amounts of entertainment to the community. That's what we've been doing for the last eighteen years. We do it very successfully. I would like to ask if there was any questions of the board for myself.
Thank you. Are there any questions, council, at this time?
Excellent. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you for being here. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on the bill this evening? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing portion, and we will take up Bill 2018-93.
In ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, changing, amending, and modifying the zoning map of the zoning code of the City of Jefferson by rezoning 8.43 acres of land addressed as 1101 East Capitol Avenue from M1 Light Industrial to PUD Planned Unit Development and approving a preliminary PUD plan for said property.
Thank you. And I'll ask for any council questions or deliberation, and as we start that process, this is probably one of the developments that I know I, and probably council as well, has received some of the most enthused and excited comments from the public, and a lot of excitement around this particular development, and also with its proximity to the MSP redevelopment. A lot of comments and excitement around the community for it. So I appreciate you taking the, kind of, being visionary in that area and seeing what a building like that can be made into to benefit that area. Any council questions and deliberation this evening? Okay. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Bill passes. Congratulations, and we're glad to see this move forward. And Mr. Lataki, could I get the spelling of your last name for the record? I apologize, we didn't get the spelling. If you could just let Mrs. Donaldson know or on the mic there. Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I was a little rushed. Raymond Lataki, that's L-A-T-O-C-K-I, and Portland, Oregon.
All right. Thank you for being here. Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
All right. Item six, appointments by the mayor. Is there a motion to approve the slate of Board and Commission members, please? You know, I forgot, Mrs. Strope, would you like to give us a brief update on that first?
Sure, I'd be happy to. The recommendations, there's two recommendations for the Police Personnel Board. Those are William Burton and Stephanie Scruggs. There are three recommendations for the Public Transit Advisory Committee. Those are Angela Hirsch, Wayne Lee, and James Nelp. And then there are four for the Human Relations Commission, Missy Creed, Patsy Johnson, Susan Cook Williams, and Raymond Lee.
Thank you, Mrs. Strope. Are there any questions? Okay, is there a motion to approve? So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We appreciate all our board and commission volunteers. Item seven, we don't have anyone signed up for presentations from staff consultants and invited guests. Item eight, we have announcements by mayor and council. I'll remind everyone to go to JeffersonCityMo.gov for a complete meeting calendar and agendas. I'll start with my announcements this evening. We received a Christmas gift from our partnership city in Minshburg, Germany. They sent it in December. We just received it this week, and it is a book. It's in German, but we would love for everyone to take a look at it. I'll have it in the mayor's office, and then eventually we'll place it in our display case. And so we have a nice book and a cup that they sent us, and a Christmas card from Mayor Christian Zuber, and it reads, "All the best wishes for the year 2019 from your city of partnership, Minshburg, to you, your family, and all the residents of Jefferson City. I also hope that in the new year, happiness, health, success, luck, and God's blessings will be your copious. Happy and blessed Christmas and happy 2019," Christian. And he wrote that all in English, and I'm impressed. I could not write him a note in German. I wish I could. And it's wonderful to have such a great partnership, and hopefully we'll be making a trip to visit our partnership city here in the very near future. A couple other announcements I wanted to touch on, I know a lot of us have heard the devastating news of the fire in Holt Summit that affected a lot of our neighbors, and I wanted to touch on the Red Cross, that I know Carlos is a board member, and there might be some other council members that serve on that board, but I've been in contact with them, and they've said that monetary donations are the most need that they have at this time. So certainly reach out to the Red Cross if you have any, if you're willing to help. And a lot of other organizations as well have banded together to help those families that are in need. Another announcement, I'm honored that I will be attending the USS Missouri Battleship's 75th Anniversary of the Commissioning in Hawaii, and I'll be leaving Thursday, and will be there over the weekend for the commissioning anniversary ceremony. And Lieutenant Governor Kehoe is attending as well, and it's definitely an honor to be able to be there in person for such a historic event. So I will be sure to share our best wishes on behalf of the City of Jefferson, and I do have a city proclamation that I will present on behalf of all of us here. So I'll be sure to take a lot of pictures, and very excited to get to take part in that ceremony. So those are my announcements. Does council have anything this evening? Councilman Fitzwater?
I would just make a comment. I know that we have internally communicated, but just to thank the staff for the amazing work they did a week ago on the snow. I didn't hear any comments from folks in the fourth ward, nothing but praise. Thanks for all their efforts. I think it went with that incident, and that's amazing for as much snow as we got and how heavy the snow was.
It is really incredible. All the city departments that really banded together to work together on that. We certainly appreciate everyone's efforts in all departments, and I've heard countless compliments from people visiting Jefferson City and residents alike that have been very amazed and pleased. It's really like no other city that we've seen, the comments that I've heard, how wonderful it is. So thank you, Councilman Fitzwater. Any other council announcements? Councilman Mahalovich?
There will be a Finance Committee meeting at 7:30 across the hall this Thursday.
Thank you. Any other committee reports or announcements? Okay. Item nine, Lincoln University representative update. We have Ms. Carolyn Wanjaro back from Christmas break.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and council as a whole. Oh, my voice is just terrible. It feels good to be back. I don't like the cold and the snow, but it feels really, really good to be back. And just a few announcements. This week, on Thursday, there is a women's basketball game and a men's basketball game. The women's game is at 5:30, and the men's game is at 7:30. And then on Saturday, the track team, both men's and women's, will be playing in Kansas. I will be competing in Kansas. On Friday and Saturday as well, we have a bowling competition in Chesterfield, Missouri. And then on Saturday, we have another basketball game, which the women's is at 1:00 p.m., and the men's is at 3:00 p.m. And the basketball games will be at Jason Gym. The track and field is over in Kansas, and again, the bowling tournament is in Chesterfield, Missouri. And that is all.
Thank you, Ms. Wanjaro. Item 10, presentations from the gallery on specific bills. Let's see, we have no one signed up for that. Item 10 or 11, consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 12, bills introduced, 2018-98.
In ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a municipal agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the Dicks Road Improvements.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. It's a very basic agreement, basically that it allows MoDOT to place some signs on city right away. They would like some formal approval from the council for that.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilman Mahalovich?
When is that project scheduled to start?
I believe it's going to start yet this year. So I don't have an exact date yet.
Any other questions? All right. Bill 2018-99.
In ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a $22,000 agreement with Rave Mobility for the purchase of Rave Mobility and a 50% cost share with Cole County.
Mr. Malman?
Thank you. This bill approves some modifications to the existing contract with Rave Mobility. The council approved this contract, I believe, back in December when it was sent to Rave for signature. They had some additional changes they would like to see. These changes were reasonable and accepted, and so this ordinance approves the amended contract with Rave Mobility, and will allow them to proceed with that project.
Thank you. Councilman Graham?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd like to request that we suspend the rules, Bill Number 2018-099, and take it up as a third reading.
Thank you. Are there any objections to suspending the rules? Okay, with that, we will read 2018-99.
In ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a $22,000 agreement with Rave Mobility for the purchase of Rave Mobility and a 50% cost share with Cole County.
Council deliberation, discussion? Roll call, please.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Motion passes. Looking forward to getting that moving. Thank you. 2018-100.
In ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a $210,823 agreement with Donahue and Associates Incorporated for the Westview Pump Station upgrade and Basin Town Sewer Evaluation.
Mr. Malman?
Similar to the last bill, this bill approves amendments to a contract that the city has previously approved with Donahue Associates for professional services related to the Westview Pump Station upgrade. The contract, after approved by the city council, was sent to the contractor for signature, and they also had some additions and changes to the contract. Those changes reflected in the agreement were reasonable and accepted, and is back and forth on the city council for approval of the amended contract.
Thank you. Any council questions? All right. Item 13, bills pending, 2018-91.
In ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a $64,232.80 agreement with Axon for the purchase of TASER Assurance Plan.
Lieutenant David Williams?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On behalf of Chief Schrader, the bill authorizes an agreement with Axon, formerly known as TASER International, for the purpose of the TASER Assurance Plan. The department has participated in the TAP program for the past five years and wishes to continue with a new five-year agreement. The TAP program covers maintenance of the units each year, and at the end of the five-year program, the program replaces all those units with upgraded models. The cost of the request is $8,692 for the initial payment, and the cost for each of the four following years will be $13,885.20 for a total obligation of $64,232.80.
Council questions, deliberation? Councilman Graham?
Yes, Lieutenant Williams. My colleague, Councilman Mahalovich, has agreed to be a TASER dummy. So you could please, at the next council meeting, taste him, so we can make sure this works for our money.
Okay, order in the room here. Okay. Any other questions, deliberation? All right, roll call, please.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
It's that orange crush. I think that's what is making Graham just kind of, it's all coming back now. Okay. 2018-92.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with SiteMed in the amount of $65,645 for providing firefighter health and wellness physicals compliant with NFPA 1582.
Chief Schofield?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is the same contractor we've used for the past two years. There's an expansion of services in this year that's funded by a 90% grant funding through FEMA. And so there's addition of baseline heavy metal testing and some additional components to this annual medical physical for all uniformed firefighters. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or deliberation? Roll call, please.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather? Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Bill passes. We've taken up 93. Nothing on the informal. Resolution 2018-28. Councilman Schreiber?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd like to have that withdrawn at this time.
Okay, thank you. Item 16, presentations from the gallery and other topics. We don't have anyone signed up this evening. Item 17, any council and staff discussion of presentation topics this evening? Okay, then that leads us to item 18, going into closed session. Mrs. Donaldson, would you read the motion?
Pursuant to Section 610.021, legal action causes of action or litigation involving a public governmental body in any confidential or privileged communications between a public governmental body or its representatives and its attorneys.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather? Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Motion passes, so we will go into closed session in five minutes in this room. And I wasn't just trying to beat Councilman Hussey's meeting record. Oh, that's true. We're not quite over you. I was about to claim that. Okay, thank you. All right, we'll see you back here in five minutes.
Thanks a lot. Appreciate it.